Welcome to the May 24th meeting of the Stafford County Planning Commission. If you would please rise for the invocation by Mr. Rhodes and the pledge of allegiance by Ms. Bailey.
As we are in between the time period of the Peace Officer Memorial Day and our nation's Memorial Day, I just ask that we take a moment of silence and remember those that we've lost before we go into the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for the many freedoms you provide to us and that you bless us with, to include the freedom of speech and the freedom to govern. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here this evening to talk about our county's business. We know those freedoms aren't free. We've lost nearly 7,000 men and women in uniform since 9/11 in Iraq and Afghanistan. We've lost nearly 2,400 law enforcement officers in that same timeframe. They sacrifice so that we can have the privileges we have today. Bless them, bless their families, bless those in uniform serving around the world, bless emergency services, bless our law enforcement. May our actions and words today and every day be fitting and respectful of the sacrifice that they made to provide us these freedoms. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, for that moving invocation, and thank you, Ms. Bailey. We now move on to the roll call of the members. Ms. Bailey?
Mr. Appicella?
Here.
Ms. Vanuch?
Here.
Mr. English?
Here.
Mr. Boswell is absent. Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
And myself, Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. And Mr. Boswell has a family engagement this evening of great honors for his family, and we wish him well. And so now we move to declarations of disqualification. Are there any this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we move on to public presentations. This is a time where members of the public can come forward to talk about an issue that is not one of the two public hearings this evening. The public hearings are on the pet store item and the Falmouth Overlay District, so it's on a topic other than that. I remind you that you have three minutes to speak. When you come forward, please state your name and address. You're addressing the board as a whole, not individual members. Remember, this is not a dialogue. It's where the public gets to express their information within the three-minute time period. At the start of your comments, the green light will shine. When you have hit one minute, the yellow light will shine, and then at red light goes on, we ask that you wrap up your comments. So is there any member of the public that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Gregory Daniel Gavin, 242 Stony Hill Road. I live out in Hartwood, Virginia. Thank you for having me. I'd like to talk today about our 1764, the resolution we passed two weeks ago. For the record, I'd like to clarify a few misstatements from our last meeting. I believe this meeting was April 26. Mrs. Susan Blackburn's comments when analyzing and explaining light values and their metrics, comparing lumens to foot candles, in her statement, if you look at the records, about an hour and three-quarters into the meeting, she tries to describe the difference between lumens and foot candles. She made a misstatement, I'm sorry. She said that lumens and foot candles measure two very different things, and they're confusing. They are not. They measure the exact same thing. That's it. One is metric, one is English or imperial. Lumens is the metric standard. They both measure brightness. Foot candles is the imperial or English standard. One foot candle is 10.76 times brighter than a lumen. For the record, Mrs. Blackburn offered a misstatement that now needs to be corrected for the record. Mr. Jim Hamilton's statements were given supreme relevancy. He did a great job of providing information regarding lights in public spaces. I agree with most of what he presented, only one problem, he was speaking about public lighting. The subject was private property lights and light trespass on private property land that abuts other private property land. This poses sort of a misstatement that now needs to be corrected. Mr. Rhodes, or, excuse me, the whole planning committee overstepped its authorities when it redacted, retracted, and dismissed Mr. Dayton's, a deputy county administrator's statement. It was a written letter, signature in 2015. Jeff, if we could turn to that for just a second. Mr. Dayton should have been allowed to speak and redact or correct his own record. Instead, I just felt that you overstepped your boundaries. I brought up points that were about problematic wording and the exemption regarding aimed at and pointed at. If we could go to the next slide, Jeff? This is what you voted for. Nobody really kind of did their homework to find out how bright that was. If I could just read the bottom there, "This commercial lighting level is far too bright for residential uses. Most homes in Stafford illuminate far less than 10% of this." Nobody has even 10% of this, less than 10% of this, in any home that I looked at. One would reasonably expect, which is me, residents found in Hartwood would not be anywhere near this level. I live on a golf course in a park. It's very dark out there. I wouldn't expect it to be the same as somebody who lives across from a 7-Eleven or convenience store on Route 1. And I'll just wrap it up. That's it.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will wrap up the public comment period. We now move to the public hearings. Mr. Harvey, it's on to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Blackburn will be giving the presentation for our first public hearing tonight.
Good evening, Ms. Blackburn, again.
Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, this evening you are hearing a proposed ordinance amendment 017-12, and this will be amending the Stafford County Code, Section 28-25, definitions of specific terms, to amend the definition of pet store to allow for a vaccination clinic for dogs and cats and create the definition for a vaccination clinic for dogs and cats. Now, staff had received a request to amend the definition of a pet store to include a clinic for vaccinating the dogs and cats, and this was a result of a nationally-known pet store wanting to occupy a commercial space in a project that was zoned PT&amp;D, which is planned traditional neighborhood development. Currently, the definition for a pet store excludes all veterinary services. The PT&amp;D district permits as a by right use all the retail uses permitted by right in the B2 urban commercial zoning district. The retail uses include a pet store, but currently the definition for a pet store explicitly excludes all veterinary services. And if adopted, this proposed amendment would amend the definition of a pet store to include the vaccination clinics for dogs and cats and create a definition for such a clinic. At the March 8th meeting, the planning commission voted to conduct a public hearing, and you voted to add the services of providing heartworm testing and preventative medication for dogs and cats and flea and tick preventative medication. And this was to be added to the definition for a veterinary clinic, and this has been done. So the current proposed amendment that we have tonight does include that definition. And this will allow for, if you all vote to approve this and forward it on to the board, this amendment would provide a service for the residents of the county in caring for their pets and accommodate a service in the pet store that has become an industry standard. And the deadline for holding a public hearing and making recommendations is June 1st. And do we have any questions?
All right. Any questions for Ms. Blackburn? Seeing none. Thank you, ma'am. All right, now we move to the public hearing and the public comment time period, of which, again, you are able to come up and speak on this topic, about the veterinary pet stores issue. You have three minutes. When you come up, you state your name and address. The green light will turn on. When you have hit one minute, the yellow light turns on, and then when red light hits, we ask that you wrap up your comments. All right? Anyone willing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and see if there's the will of the commission on this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we recommend forward, we send forward recommending approval of proposed ordinance 01712.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any comment? Mr. Rhodes?
No, Mr. Chairman. It incorporates the comments from the last time in the public hearing, and I think it is an appropriate way to go forward.
Okay. Ms. Vanuch?
No further comment.
Any other member? Hearing none, we will now go for the vote. And the motion passes six with one member absent. All right. Thank you, Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you.
Mr. Harvey is second. Public hearing for the evening.
Mr. Chairman, the next public hearing presentation will be made by Kathy Baker.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This item is an ordinance amendment to the Falmouth Redevelopment Overlay District. And the proposal is to amend the district to prohibit additional uses within the overlay district. The FR district regulations were created in October of 2016, and within that ordinance, there were certain uses that were specified to be prohibited. The planning commission has recommended adding other, excuse me, prohibited uses to the ordinance. Just as a reminder, this is the location and a zoning map of the area, which you see in purple, and this is the subject area of the Falmouth Redevelopment Overlay District. The district has not been imposed yet on any of the properties. That has had a public hearing and has been to the planning commission as well as the Board of Supervisors. The board is currently holding that rezoning until these changes are made, if there are changes made to the district. The purpose of the FR district is to provide suitable and sufficient opportunities for redevelopment within a historic district. It is also to allow flexibility in new construction and reuse of existing buildings. It's also to maintain the historic nature and cultural context of the Falmouth area and to allow more by right uses than permitted in the underlying district. And this is to promote reuse, particularly of some of the vacant buildings within the historic district. Additionally, restricting certain underlying uses that are not compatible within the historic So as the ordinance currently stands, you have certain permitted and prohibited uses. If you look in the left-hand column, in addition to what you have in the underlying districts such as B2 commercial or R1 residential zoning, you have these additional uses that would be permitted as a by right use. In the middle column, you have specific uses that, in addition to the existing conditional uses within the zoning district, under an overlay, you would be permitted to have these uses, which would require a conditional use permit. And that's drive-through facilities, adult daycare, fleet parking, hotels or motels, or wholesale business. And in the right-hand column, you see the uses that are currently prohibited under the FR overlay district. So with the proposed ordinance 017-20, I'll note that it was originally included adding adult business and nightclub as prohibited uses, and this was upon recommendation of the planning commission during earlier discussions. So the board did refer this ordinance to the planning commission and also gave you all the authority to make changes to the ordinance, including adding other uses. So at your April 26 meeting, you did discuss additional uses to prohibit, and so now this ordinance has been amended to incorporate the prohibition of these additional uses. And these are the additional uses that you have, that we have incorporated. On the left, you'll see medium-intensity commercial, retail, and theater with fewer than 3,500 seats would require a conditional use permit now. And then the prohibited uses that we would add to those that are already prohibited include adult business, boat sales, broadcast station, building material sale and storage yard, and malt sale, convenience center, fleet parking. I'll note that under the existing ordinance, fleet parking requires a conditional use permit, so now that's moving from that column into the prohibited use column. Also prohibited would be high-intensity commercial, retail, hospital, laboratory, research, and testing, marina, motor vehicle rental, nightclub, and a theater with more than 3,500 seats. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I do have one question. I know that Ms. McLendon had very wisely pointed out that in the new chart, we talk about under 3,500 seats and over 3,500 seats, but we don't actually talk about if they were at exactly 3,500 seats. And if, am I capturing that correctly? So that maybe we want to tweak that and change some language in that to say 3,500 or more, right?
And then 3,499 unless.
I mean, yeah, that's up to you if we need to look and see if that's listed anywhere else in the ordinance, throughout the ordinance, because that language came specifically from the way that the ordinance is currently written.
Ms. Baker, I would encourage the commission to look at adding the language theater with 3,500 or more seats is consistent with this other placement in the zoning ordinance, another different category, so I believe would mirror it.
Okay, well then, any other questions before we move on? Okay. Is there a feel for?
Public hearing.
Yes. We have our public hearing on this. Any member of the public wish to talk about this item? Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. And so is there a feeling by the board about this item, first about adjusting it to say the 3,500 or more, and then we can go forward from there?
Makes perfect sense.
Okay, so Mr. Rhodes?
Do you motion for that?
Do we need to motion for that, Ms. McLendon? Okay. So, Mr. Rhodes, am I understanding you making a motion for 017-20 with the amendment of saying a theater of 3,500 seats or more?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we send forward with the recommending approval of ordinance 017-20 with the modification to the additional prohibited uses in the overlay district to state theater with 3,500 or more seats.
Okay. And either Ms. Vanuch or Mr. English were battling for it.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Vanuch was second. Anything, Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd simply highlight and note, as we all know, we've done a number of public hearings on this item. They've been helpful, beneficial, and informative. We've made modifications as we've gone along. We had several speakers that felt necessary to come out and discuss it as it evolved along, and I think that the representation here is a further reinforcement that we've been able to incorporate and adjust and modify to make it a meaningful ordinance, so I feel good going forward, sir.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Vanuch?
I would just echo Mr. Rhodes' comments. Nothing further.
Okay. Any other board member? All right. I'll just add that it was, and sort of tag with Mr. Rhodes was saying, first we had a great deal of public input, then this body made some input, then the supervisors had input, and staff, of course, had input. So the whole process worked very well in that everybody had a say and was heard. So with that, we will go to a vote to either approve or not 017-20. And that passes by a vote of six to zero with one member absent. And that takes care of both of our public hearings for the evening. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business, so we move to the planning director's report. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items on my list for tonight's discussion. One is, last week, the board referred a proposed new zoning district, the R5 Age-Restricted Housing Zoning District, to the planning commission. You'd previously had a public hearing on that. Since the planning commission had its hearing and made its recommendation, it was brought to the board's attention that the proponent of the new district had observed that the initial language that was referred out of the board's Community Economic Development Committee was supposed to reference that the density was based on the gross tract area. For some reason, that was modified, and the proponent of the amendment has indicated that would have an adverse impact on their thought process for the overall amendment and a project that they're contemplating. Similarly, they also expressed concerns about the density. They had initially requested 24 units an acre, and when the commission forwarded its amendment, it looked at 12 units an acre. The applicants expressed to me that 24 units per acre is something that they need in order to have a viable project for that zoning category. So the board, when they referred it back to the planning commission to hold another hearing to correct the problem, stipulated that the ordinance would have 24 units an acre and the gross tract area as part of the ordinance amendment proposal. So the commission is asked to consider holding a public hearing. You can make recommendations or an alternative ordinance to see how, to deal with it as you see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And if our conversation was what I remember, the next available public hearing night would be June 28th, our second meeting in June, correct, sir?
That's correct.
All right. So is there any discussion on the item? If not, then we'll...
What is the time limit on action, or time?
What's the time? Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rhodes, you would normally have 100 days from tonight's meeting.
Okay. And the July, since we only have one meeting in July and one in August, and from Mr. Harvey, those both will be rather heavy meetings since they'll have other public hearings on that. The 28th is probably the most judicious. All right?
Make a motion to recommend forward for public hearing.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Sorry, Mr. English. Any comment, Mr. Rhodes?
No, sir.
Ms. Bailey?
No, sir.
All right. Any other member? Okay, we'll now vote to go to a public hearing. All right, and that has passed unanimously with one member absent. Right, so now that is, Mr. Harvey, that takes care of your first item, so now your second item on your report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The next item is to discuss the legislative process. On an annual basis, the Board of Supervisors works with our state delegation in the General Assembly to advocate for legislation that the county seems to think is advantageous to our purpose and mission. Every year, in the last several years, the planning commission has expressed some ideas to the board as to what you think might be good as far as changes to state legislation. This year, the board is speeding up its process. It's taking its initial suggestions in June, so have this item on the list for discussion if the commission wants to discuss it tonight or take it up at your next available meeting to go over the ideas that you have for legislation. In the past two years, there have been two items for legislative discussion. One was preliminary subdivision plans, and this commission noted in 2014, the code changed that eliminated the requirement for preliminary subdivision plans for neighborhoods of 50 or fewer lots. That's had a chilling effect on the number of preliminary plans that have been presented to the planning commission. Also, another amendment that you've asked for over the years is dealing with cluster subdivisions, in particular, how cluster subdivisions are configured, and also what's eligible for open space. So I'd ask the commission for some guidance as to whether you want to discuss it tonight or have it as a regular agenda item on our future agenda.
All right. Is there, Mr. Harvey, first, is it, it's not going to inhibit the work of our, the people who are helping us with this, bringing these issues to the legislature if we were to take it up either in the first or second meeting in June?
No, sir. The guidance I've received is the board's going to start solidifying its initiatives in June. I don't have a specific date.
Okay. Is there a desire to add anything else to the list or to wait until, it would be June 28th, would be, or June 14th? Does anybody have any other issues to bring forward, or do we want to wait?
Mr. Chairman, I would just share the observation that at minimum, these two, in my opinion, these two should still go forward. If we add to it, certainly so be it. If they're going to start their work early in June, we might consider recommending these forward and reserving the right to add if we come up with some in the next couple of weeks. These are still problematic. It's not the issue that they don't come before us, per se, on the preliminary subdivision plans, for the sake of them coming before us. It's the issue that it then so strongly motivates doing these small developments that we're just getting all these little pockets instead of a more comprehensive planning perspective to it, and that's the concern, more so about the first one, and the second one just leads to a lot of different odd behaviors. I think they're still worth going forward. I'd suggest we might consider endorsing these forward, going ahead with these, but then also commenting we may come some more after the next meeting.
All right. Any other comments? I brought up one to Mr. Harvey and Ms. McLendon the other day, which was stormwater management. That seems to be a large issue that came forward to the supervisors at their last meeting when they were talking about one of the drive-through restaurants, and it's something that many supervisors are dealing with on an almost daily basis from what they were saying. So I think that it would be beneficial to them to know that we understand that the stormwater management issue is a problem, and the state giving them some more leeway or some more guidance as to how to handle it would be beneficial if people are all right with bringing that on the list as well. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, just to elaborate a little bit more, our discussion was that we have some situations where there's apparent drainage issues, and then a project comes forward. The project, when it comes forward, the code says that it cannot make the drainage problem worse. So they have to mitigate at least a minimum to the existing condition today, but if that existing condition's not adequate, then you have some concern. So would it be the desire to require, through the state standards, that stormwater management overcompensate in cases where there are drainage complaints and things of that nature?
I'm all right with that. Mr. Rhodes is looking pensive.
I don't really have a concern, per se, and I think that that makes sense to go forward, but it might be worth giving ourselves two weeks to get, just see if there's any nuance to how you define that. Is it fix-it-all? Is it make it better? I'm not sure what it is, and I would wonder if there's a couple, we always rely on our neighboring jurisdictions, if there's any, if there, while I know we're stuck on state, if they might have an opinion, if we just even just reach out to fellow planning directors, Mr. Harvey, and just see if there's a sense as to how you might define that, because I think we need to give a little bit of a fidelity to a position that they take forward. They certainly could just take forward that we need to do something about this, but it might help if we can get a little bit more.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rhodes, just to clarify, under state law, we have to basically
adopt the state's regulations.
Right.
So you're probably not going to find a lot of variation amongst jurisdictions. There may be some discussion about how you get to that, achieve that state standard, but for the most part, it's all the same. So this would be asking for an additional standard that would require additional reduction in stormwater.
Would it benefit us at all? I understand that, fully understand that. My thought would be, if we, oversimplify, but if you just reached out and brainstormed with a couple, if we could get it changed, what would we want it to change to, or how would we want to go so that there's something to be pitched forward versus just you've got to change it?
So would you be amenable, and Mr. Harvey, because as of right now, we don't have any public hearings for June 14th? So that we send forward the two that we have used in the past. We let them know that we're working on something that is relating to stormwater management and/or if anybody thinks of anything else that we might send up later, and that we, of course, would like to have their thoughts since they're dealing with the same issue so that we're working in conduit with them. Is that sort of agreement by people? That way, they know this is coming down the road, but if they, so if they start in June, they know that we're on the same, right? We're going down the same flow of water as that they're thinking about. All right. All right. And you don't need any vote or anything on that. You're just, right?
No, sir.
Ms. McLendon's shaking her head, so I'll take that as an answer. All right. Thank you, sir. And if anyone else thinks of anything, certainly they can relay it to all of us and to staff, and then we can move forward. and then we can move forward on that one as well. Anything else, Mr. Harvey?
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Now we move to the county attorney.
I have no report at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. So we move to committee reports. Assigned ordinance committee. Ms. Bailey, you are the one present, so you get the report.
Excuse me. We did have a meeting on May 18th, and we had one member who was absent, so some of the information, we were not able, or we didn't look at or discuss. But we did ask for Ms. Blackburn to go back and put together a grid of sorts of the signed ordinances in comparison to some of the other localities out there, so we could see where we stand at today and where some of the other localities stand. Had a discussion about the meeting that we attended in Richmond, and that was our meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Any particular date yet for the next meeting or not yet? All right. The parking and drive aisle one, I believe, is meeting June 1st?
That is correct. We are meeting on June 1st. We'll update you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. The landscape standards subcommittee met this evening. Prior to this meeting, we went through sort of the list of issues and topics that we'll have to go into next. We initially scheduled to meet before our June 14 meeting to look at one topic in particular and sort of moving at the different topics, either one or two at a time. And so that's where that stands for that committee. Right? So now we move to chairman's report. The only thing that I will bring forward is, as of right now, we have nothing of major substance for our June 14 meeting, so it's my prerogative, I understand, that I can cancel the June 14 meeting, so unless people are demonstrating displeasure. All right. So the June 14 meeting is canceled. People can recover from June 13th?
Election day.
Primary election day. All right. Other business, there's a TRC meeting on June 14th, and that's the Rock Hill District, so that's you, Ms. Vanute. We have no minutes to approve, and so I now adjourn the meeting. 7:02.